I'd like to call the committee of the whole for the Village of Cary for Tuesday, September 1st, 2015, to order with roll call, please.
Rick Alpine?
Here.
Kraus?
Here.
Chapman?
Here.
Cavalli?
Here.
Duda?
Here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, moving to the public comments where, I don't think there's anybody here, Les Carrigan has something she wants to say. We'll go ahead and open and close public comment. Thank you. The first item is the consideration of the August 18th, 2015 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Okay, to put on the consensus agenda then? Thank you. We'll do the same for the consideration of the August 18th, 2015 Village Board Meeting Minutes. Changes, edits, corrections? None said? Okay, consensus to move to the consent agenda? Thank you. The consideration of the August 25th, 2015 Special Village Board Meeting Minutes? Okay, put on the consensus agenda. Thank you. Now, moving along to regular business, we are going to discuss the website redesign status update. Jacob?
Just want to give the committee the whole quick update on where we're at with the website redesign process. If you recall, earlier this year, the village board had approved a website redesign with Civic Plus. Attached in your agenda packet is a project timeline. It's a five-phase project here. We're in about Phase Two, which is the middle of the project. During Phase One, we completed what was pretty much just an information dump to Civic Plus and getting them what our expectations are as far as for the content, excuse me, but also for the end design. And as a part of that, we had included several websites that we provide Civic Plus that were kind of the inspiration for where we wanted to go. And these websites, they're showing up a little bit different than what you would see if you were at your computer at home, just due to the fact that, you know, our media's not really transferring it as you would see it at home. But this is one of them that we liked, and this is Nantucket, Massachusetts. Specifically, within this website, you can see very clean icons, you know, stand out. But then also, if you look in the middle of the screen here, there's this feature where it kind of combines the information. So we have, for example, the View Village News, but then you could also click on the calendar right in the same spot. And so there were subtleties in each one of these websites, and I'm just going to show you four. We had many others that we sent into Civic Plus, but these were ones that our website committee really liked. The next one here with Panama City, you'll see it was kind of a similar design as with the Nantucket, but again...
Better weather.
Yeah.
Same, so everyone move.
And they have a lot of very nice pictures to choose from, as you'll see, too. But in the middle of their website, they have this feature here for how they show their city news. And what our website design committee really liked was that there was a picture along with that, where it wasn't just a newsflash, and that's what we have right now. I think that people are easily, you know, able to relate to a picture up there. And so this is something that we have asked for in the website redesign. Again, we're on the steam, I guess, of, excuse me, areas that are close to water, but they also have very, very, very great websites. With Gulf Shores, Alabama, when looking at this website, one of the features that we had really liked was when you click on one of the links here, they have on the side this "Did You Know" feature, which I think is a great opportunity, and our website design committee really liked how you could showcase different things about the Village of Cary within that "Did You Know" feature. For example, the Fall Fest, you know, "Did You Know" had a picture of the Fall Fest, and "Did You Know" 5,000 people attended the Fall Fest in, you know, whatever year. And so it's a way to provide the user a little bit more information and showcase the Village of Cary and what we have to offer, just in these small, little ways. And then finally, one of the websites that we liked, Danville, Virginia. Excuse me, I'm sorry. With this website, you can see it's a little bit different with the design, and it's not necessarily saying that we're looking for this, you know, V or triangular-shaped pattern, but having a little bit more of a texture or design created into the, excuse me, into the website. And if you scroll down, we like this as a whole, when you look at the news and announcements in the middle, and then some other features, too, and you get into items such as, you know, the city spotlight here as well. And so we're not here right now to, you know, lay out what our website is right now. We're still going through the website redesign process. We've provided Civic Plus with two sets of comments. We're waiting for the third draft to come back to us. We are going to review that, excuse me, provide another set of comments to them until we get to a website design that we're satisfied with. And then going through the process, all of our content will be uploaded and confirmed on the website, on our existing one, by August 2nd. And then we get into the village staff being trained on how to manage the new website, and then we're looking for a rollout date of early December. And so that is just a summary of where we're at in the process, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has regarding the redesign process.
Jacob, who did we work with the last time we updated the website? Was it the same company?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Excuse me, it was Civic Plus.
One of the things I wouldn't mind seeing on the website would be a, maybe just like a little, we like to do polls in the community, it seems. So I was thinking like, you know, "How do you feel about the fall cleanup of brush cleanup" or something? You know, simple little questions that we could put on. Very good, good, you know, needs improvement. Simple little questions that we could put over there on the corner side of it. It might even draw people to the website, you know, or some, so if that'd be possible.
Yeah, I can look at if there's any options, because obviously, we may not always have a poll out there, but there's, you know, some functionality to have some of those tools instead of sending them to a separate website, if we're able to keep them on our existing website.
How often would this be updated? Are we looking at, like, how often are, like, the current website we have, how often has that been looked at and updated? Or not necessarily updated, but how often is that looked at from the time that we...
For content.
For content in that?
Well, the content is, it varies. There are some weeks in that we're updating the content every day. There's some weeks where that, you know, does not occur. We, generally, it is the, each department manages their own content, and so there's a staff person in each department that's doing the content update. So it certainly varies. The pictures, what we're trying to get away with, well, I shouldn't say get away with, but get away from, is updating the pictures. And we'd like to get, which is why we had a call for pictures, if you recall, from the village residents, we'd like to get, you know, four or five solid pictures that we can, excuse me, keep up there all the time. And maybe it's once a year, we change those out or change out a couple of them, just due to the fact that that does take time for someone to go in, pull those off, put up, you know, new pictures. There's sometimes where the pictures don't always format correctly, and so we have to spend additional time. And so we're trying to be, you know, respectful of everyone's time here and be as efficient as possible.
I have a couple. So our water feature is going to be sunset and crest, then, is that what, right?
Rick.
Just curious if I pay attention, because we have one, you know, so, pardon me? Yeah, I wish we had a water feature.
That's what that one slide looked like.
So having been part of the original website design and looking at these, one thing hits me immediately, and of course, it's different time now than it was then, and, you know, media and capabilities and all that are much different, our site is way too busy. It has too many pictures in the Cary homepage. It's a collage effect, which all of us thought was cool back when we did it, but now it looks really dated, really dated. So one of the first ones you showed, Jake, was very simple, you know, a lot of a water feature in a house, lot of a water feature and a, yeah, something like that. I mean, then I'm not paying attention as much to the picture. The picture is kind of there subconsciously, but I'm looking, I mean, I see those five tabs right away, and I'm not necessarily focused on all the mess that we have on our website. So, you know, my comment to the, to the committee is simple is probably better in today's day and age.
And I would say that we absolutely agree with that comment. If you go to this website, and I encourage you when you get home to check it out and just see how it looks on your computer, but it would be squared off, so all you would see actually is just the picture with the bar on the left, the icons on the, in the middle there where it starts with online payments, and then the top. And so it is very clean, you get an idea of, you know, the community with the picture, but you can find out where you want to go right away. And so wholeheartedly, you know, we agree with you, and that's why, you know, through the budget process, we advocated for a website redesign.
The other thing, as it relates to pictures, that I was thinking about as I was listening to you talk, I mean, first off, I have to tell you, as probably everybody here already realizes, we were really challenged for pictures back when we did the original site. There's not a lot of attractive things to put on a website within this community, and that's the fact. We don't have a true water feature, we don't have a, you know, a downtown icon or anything like that. When you look at some of these, these are landmark, you know, towns with certain landmarks within them, and best of my knowledge, I can't think of one. So I know we were challenged initially, but one thing I think might be cool, and I'm just throwing it out so you guys can toss it around at the committee level, is maybe seasonal pictures, so that, you know, you're putting spring, summer, fall, and winter, which I would think we would have some very pretty fall and winter pictures. But, you know, things like that that kind of coincide with the season, it's just a thought.
Yeah, absolutely. You hit the, you know, right on the head. I mean, we're challenged with pictures. I mean, there's not like that destination that really shines that you see on some of these websites, but we've tried to get creative. Eric's been able to help us out and let us use...
Has he created some icons for us that we don't even have? Because he's very good at that.
He's, well, he's a part of the website redesign committee for a reason. But he's helped us out with, you know, getting pictures up in the bucket truck, to maybe try to get different angles and, you know, spice up some of these pictures. So I hear you.
That was great.
Did you say that you got the front page, it's got the new trustees' information there on the website now?
As far as I'm aware, yeah, within the current website, you're saying?
Yeah. Okay. I know that was a question.
Yeah, there were some picture selections we were waiting for, and we got them on.
Okay, good.
No, the pictures haven't been uploaded yet on the website. I was waiting to get final selections from the entire village board, so they're being edited right now by our photographer. But all the information as far as emails is correct.
Okay.
I think this is exciting. I think that it's going to be great.
Yeah, it's been a really fun project to work on, and we've got a good team, and we're really excited to bring this back to you and let you see the final version.
Yeah, I like the idea of the bucket truck getting pictures. I mean, that last slide that was just on this one for Nantucket showing kind of like going over, like a downtown scene or something, or I think that's kind of a cool thing.
Yeah.
Kind of showcasing it. Are there any other questions for Jake about the website update?
Oh, how about a timeline? I'm just curious, tentative timeline?
December.
Launching in December.
Oh, okay. I should have read the whole thing probably then. Sorry.
Yeah. December 3rd, we're still hitting the schedule. And this, obviously, too, we have to work with Civic Plus on the schedule as well, but there's going to be some training that, you know, our staff is going to have to, sorry, undertake, and, you know, they'll complete that in November, and we'll be ready for the rollout and ready to manage the website in December.
Thanks, Jake.
Thank you, Jake.
All right, moving along to discussion regarding our cable video service provider fee ordinance. Jake, you handling this one, too?
Yes, sir. I don't know if there's a good transition from websites to cable, but we're in the process right now of working with Comcast on the franchise agreement. As part of the franchise agreement with Comcast is that they provide the Village of Cary with 5% franchise fee, and that's 5% of the gross revenues that go back to the village. You see on the spreadsheet here, it kind of breaks that down. The subject of our conversation here tonight, though, is related to AT&amp;T. When we've done some research here, and AT&amp;T does not have a franchise agreement with the Village of Cary. That is because they are regulated under the state. As they're regulated under the state, it falls under the cable video service provider fee ordinance. The Village of Cary has not passed that ordinance, so we are unable to capture any of the gross revenue from AT&amp;T. And so what we're recommending is that the, excuse me, the village board pass the ordinance here, it's attached, the cable video service provider fee ordinance, that would provide the Village of Cary with 5% of the gross receipts from AT&amp;T. It would create then a level playing field between AT&amp;T and Comcast for the use of the villages right of way. The second part of this request here is related to PEG fees, and the PEG fees essentially cover a public access channel. As you know, we don't have a public access channel, we just recently started putting our meetings out on YouTube. If the board, well, let me step back. If the board was, well, if we were interested in doing this PEG or public access channel, I would recommend that we wait until we incur the capital cost before instituting the fee. We would have the option to institute a 1% PEG fee to recapture the costs of, the capital costs associated with rolling out that public access channel. We'd have some infrastructure costs here. We'd also have to be able to push that technology out so that people would be able to, for example, see meetings here live, either on Comcast or on AT&amp;T. And so at this time, we're not recommending that we proceed with the 1% PEG fee until that time, you know, we decide to do that. And so, you know, with the ordinance attached here, it has been reviewed by Attorney Kopic. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have regarding this. And specifically, this is just related to AT&amp;T, but we're showing Comcast because it is related to Comcast, too, in a way.
Now that AT&amp;T and Dish Network have combined, and since Dish is satellite, are they, they're not regulated by the state under the Telecommunications Act?
This is just for wired services.
So we don't get anything from Dish or...
No.
Okay. Even though now AT&amp;T and Dish are one combined company?
Well, AT&amp;T is still using Uverse, and they're still putting Uverse out through the use of our right-of-way. And so that's where we are able to capture this fee. It is just for wired services. We are not able to capture anything for Dish.
Okay. So before I became a trustee, this was one of the biggest things that ever bothered me in my whole life, if you imagine that. Why does the village get any money from my cable bill? And this is, you know, what do you do with it? Do you improve cable service? What do we do with it?
The money right now goes into our general fund. The reason why that money is coming into the Village of Cary is that Comcast and AT&amp;T are, they are utilizing the village's right-of-way to provide the service to the village's residents. This is consistent throughout numerous Chicagoland municipalities.
So we're charging our residents?
Well, technically, no, we are not charging our residents, but if you look, if you look at a Comcast bill right now, you will see that there is a franchise fee that's called out there. And so it is a fee that's on their bill. Those dollars, then, are coming back to the Village of Cary. And so technically, we're not charging our residents, but that franchise fee is coming back to the village indirectly through Comcast.
And how much is that a year, Jake?
If you look at the spreadsheet here, it's, for Comcast, it's $254,000 per year. So it's a significant amount of revenue that comes into the village.
Do you anticipate it would be similar with AT&amp;T, or what is your thoughts? You think it's going to be half, or any idea?
No, when I've, I've looked at it for some other communities, and they were talking much less. Right now, AT&amp;T, Uverse isn't throughout the village. They've selected areas, AT&amp;T has where they're going to go in the village, and we're not going to be close to the 254,000. It's going to, I would not expect it to exceed 50,000.
Do you know if they're already charging the franchise fee to the residents?
AT&amp;T? I'm not aware, I have not seen an AT&amp;T bill to examine that. I would not be, I guess I'm not aware that they would be, though, at this time.
Okay. And I know this is a little bit off topic, but do you know if there's ever been any other providers that could potentially come in the area? Other people have asked, I know, if WOW, I don't have WOW, I've heard of WOW, if they would ever come into the area because they do provide a service, my understanding is at just a lesser cost.
I've talked to them over the years to encourage them to come this way. They are not this far northwest, heavily on the northwest side of Cook County, and they are just looking at a bill standpoint significantly cheaper, depending upon your service level. We'll keep letting them know. We haven't seen any interest out this way, though, but it's definitely something we hear about from residents from time to time.
Do you know about the franchise fee, Chris? Are they already charging that to our residents?
AT&amp;T, I don't know by memory. I'd have to check it.
I didn't pay it. I had AT&amp;T here for two years, and there was no franchise fee on their bill, so.
I will check the finances.
I'm not sure if they would legally be able to do that or not, but we can certainly look into that and see.
The reason why I'm asking is because obviously, their bills are going to go up then, you know, so that's why I'm asking.
We'll find that out, and we'll email out to the board.
Back to the WOW thing, there was a resident that was very adamant about it, it was last year or two years ago, and I spent a lot of time on the phone with their representative, like Kristen said, their representatives, and they are just not prepared to come out this way at this time. It's not even on their radar.
Jacob, what's the difference between, then, the franchise fee? Because when I look at this, AT&amp;T already currently, wait, Comcast were currently collecting a franchise fee. AT&amp;T were not collecting anything from, but we're recommending that we collect a cable video service provider fee from AT&amp;T, but not one from Comcast. What is the difference there, then?
Yeah, the Comcast is regulated by, on the local level, and so you will see here, I'm sorry, you will see here, within the next few months, a agreement with Comcast come before you. Right now, the Village of Cary has an agreement with Comcast. AT&amp;T is regulated at the state level. They are not regulated at the local level. And so that's where the, you know, the cable video service provider fee ordinance comes in. And so the village and villages had the option to pass this, I think it was approved by the state in 2007, I believe. Uverse didn't come to the Village of Cary until 2009, I believe. And so we haven't been collecting that, we won't be able to collect it retroactively, but they're at different levels, to answer your question. We've got the local level out here, Village of Cary, and then we've got the state authorizing the Village of Cary to pass this ordinance.
Okay.
Does that help answer the question?
I think so.
Okay.
And then when I came on, too, there was some issues with Uverse not being available in all areas of the community. Is it available now?
It is not available in all areas in the community.
They're very particular about where they want to go. We've had conversations with them as well. There's one particular neighborhood that, it's across the street, but it's not in the southern neighborhood, and at many attempts, we've asked them to expand, and they've said no.
I mean, we'd love...
What is the reservation for that?
We'd love to have them throughout the whole village, but it comes down to, it comes down to the cost of the rollout of the infrastructure.
I almost felt like, at the time, when I was hearing things, it almost felt like AT&amp;T was trying to be a little vindictive or something and not going that direction.
I, when I got here, I flushed that issue out with their staff. That was an issue back in 2011, it's not now. We had a capital plan that they continued to recycle through. We did make some improvements in 12 and 13 to some sections of the village. But the reason they wouldn't invest in others was they have market studies of who they think they're going to draw, and they balance that against the costs, of course. And so it's been a slow rollout, but there's no issue at the village, and they're very clear about that, for me.
What about a service provider such as DirecTV? Do we collect anything from DirecTV?
No, it's just for the wired services. Yep.
Well, I would agree. I don't think, I don't, I don't agree with going with the PEG at this point, but the other ones, I think, would be something we'd want to move forward with.
Yeah, I can't see doing the PEG when we don't have it.
And the PEG would just be more for the equipment that we have here in-house, not necessarily, we're not collecting that then to turn around and support the channel on the cable, in the cable end of it.
Well, the PEG fee would cover pretty much all, or any technol, excuse me, technology costs, and so...
We would need here to then get it back to the...
There's going to be some, if the board would decide to do that, there could be some pretty heavy costs in talking with Comcast about this, because we have to have that fiber line to be able to push this out so that people can see it real time. So that's something that we would have to evaluate at a later time.
That's fine, thank you.
Are there any other comments by the village board?
Thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
Moving along to CCOM.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to brief the village board on some ongoing discussions that Chief Finland and I have been involved in, and I thought it was a good opportunity to kind of take a step back and brief you a bit about CCOM and what it is and why we're a member. Back in about 2004, the board made a decision with two other partner communities, those being Crystal Lake and the Village of Elgonquin, to initiate the construction of the CCOM Center, which is now located in the basement of Crystal Lake City Hall. CCOM serves those three partner communities for police services and fire service also for City of Crystal Lake, and then 10 customer contracts that include various fire districts and other, some smaller police departments. So there are essentially 13 agencies that are members of that right now through Crystal Lake City Hall. I am on the board as the representative of the Village of Cary at CCOM. I was the board president the prior two years, on the board vice president, now we rotate roles. I've also been the treasurer secretary. The four years that I've been here, we monitor, of course, the finances, the operation, et cetera, in making sure that dispatching services, telecommunications services is at the highest caliber. We were able, under my watch last year, we brought a new dispatch director to the county that has done a good job. Jason Kern came to us from City of Highland Park, Village of Glenview, and he has been very active in some legislation on our behalf in Springfield, along with other members of his association, to what the state ended up passing a bill that essentially says that in some various states in 2016, counties in the state of Illinois need to consolidate their dispatch centers from what they have now to a smaller number.
Have a plan, July 1st.
Have a plan, I'm sorry. That's the better way to say it. And in this county, there are six dispatch agencies that exist. CCOM is one of them, and I believe from an agency standpoint, with the most members this time. City of Harvard has a center, the City of McHenry, the Village of Lake and the Hills County has one for the Sheriff's Department, as well as the City of Woodstock. And so from a growth... as well as the city of Woodstock. And so from a growth standpoint, our CCOM center has significant capacity left, both in terms of office space and some minimal amount of staffing that can be bumped out to pick up other radio channels and other centers. So essentially, this bill, from our standpoint, it's ultimately the Emergency Telephone System Board that Chief Finland represents us on from the county that governs the decisions about, so how do we get from six to three or less centers in this county? They'll have, they're going to conduct a study process and then make a decision. And there's already been, part of what I want to tell you, other than the history, some posturing in the county about what agencies should remain, et cetera, and a lot of thought and discussion about it. The chief and I were invited to, through our CCOM, chief is one of the leaders of the police committee at CCOM, and I'm on the board. So we were invited to go and attend a meeting at the Village of Huntley Fire Protection District about 10 days ago that was held to talk with a labor attorney that represents a number of the dispatch centers in the area, defining the new state law and what it meant. And there was a full packed room of different officers and fire officials from the different county agencies trying to get a grasp of where this is going. Where it appears to be going is, I believe CCOM's in a solid position, but the ETSB board will decide. And I think that's a good thing for the village, because that's ultimately what we wanted to talk about. It's been some questions over the years about was this a good business decision or not when CCOM was initially preceded with by the village. I've stated I thought that it was because of the quality of service, but also the consistency. And in this environment, it's good in that we're seeding as a partner in terms of making the future decisions about adding other agencies. I think there'll be growth opportunities for CCOM, especially in a number of police departments. There's been discussions ongoing over the years, but they'll be accelerated now based on this legislation and simply just good business sense, I think, on behalf of a number of the municipalities. But it's a real sensitive issue, and we wanted to brief you, and the chief's going to take his side of this in a moment. There's going to be a lot of newspaper articles. There's going to be a lot of back and forth as this plays out. The, the ETSB through what's called a PSAP committee, Public Safety Answering Point Committee, is going to be methodical in developing this plan. It's due by July 1. But there's a lot of work to do and a lot of tough decisions to make by then. You know, and so wanted to make you aware of it. I think from a Village of Cary standpoint, we're in a good position. We got a formula rate. We pay about presently on an average on call volume, about $320,000 a year right now, which has gone down since I've been watching the numbers. It was as high as 355 when I started here, and it's, it's come down based on call volume. And that, in my experience and chief's experience in the area, looking at Lake County and Cook County, similar sized agencies, it's a solid rate. So new growth does two things. One, it helps spread liability to other public agencies beyond those that are already partners and, and to a lesser extent, contract customers. They have different terms. But also, you know, theoretically, as long as we continue to manage the staffing costs and the equipment, it can help us hold down our costs. Or I don't want to say lower, because I have to see, you know, the size accounts that come on board if they do. But it's certainly the direction the past village board had taken us, which is, hey, you know, stay active in it. We'd like to see it expand. Obviously, we want to cost contain. So I think this legislation helps us to do this.
Yeah, I think it's important to understand the construction or the structure of the Emergency Telephone System Board, ETSB. In McHenry County, there's only one. In Lake County, they have about 19. And how that occurred was the municipalities in Lake County saw that there was a revenue portion of the ETSB, so a number of different municipalities established their own ETSBs. So when the village administrator indicated that we have to reduce by half here from six to three, and that's the maximum, we can go down lower, that's because we have one ETSB. So there was a different provision in the statute in regards to the mandate for counties like McHenry County. I'll tell you that I think personally, having worked in Lake County and having served on the ETSB board for Lake County and here, I believe that the structure here is solid. And I believe that it lends itself to both consolidation and efficiency, because right now in Lake County, what they're doing is they're looking at something called Starcom, which is a radio network that's basically administered by the state, Motorola. But what they're doing is they're establishing a number of different talk groups and things of that nature, so that they're going to address not only the issue related to, you know, consolidation and things of that nature, but also the operations so that there's interoperability. That's the one thing that you're going to hear probably from here on out, is issues related to interoperability. And this, de facto, requires that agencies start consolidating and perhaps thoughtfully assigning municipalities or agencies to radio frequencies or talk groups, because radio traffic is self policing. You can't talk over somebody else. So that if you put a number of different agencies that have a call load, just as the village administrator indicated, you know, related to capacity, if you can kind of equal them out, and you don't have to hire more personnel, because as we know, personnel are expensive. Eighty, 86% of your budget's going to go to that. So if you can maintain the level of your personnel, equalize the call load, you can take on more entities, but not have to increase costs substantially. So that's one part of it. The other part of it is, from the ETSB standpoint, if you have less PSAPs, you have to maintain or procure less equipment. So that certainly makes it efficient in that regard. So, you know, it made a lot of sense. And I've done this before, not consolidation, but in my past experience, I was responsible for a public safety answering point. And it's a lot of work. And I think that the path that we're forced to travel as it relates to this new statute, or, you know, the new statute, is the right path. It's a matter of how you get there.
What path would that be then?
Well, first, we're going to have to do a study. And what they did do so far in McHenry County at this point, is they sent out a letter from the ETSB asking all six of the identified PSAPs if they're still interested in being PSAPs. Every one of them said yes. So now we have to say, okay, now we have to do an analysis and determine which agencies or entities are, make it, make sense to keep them as it relates to the operations within the county. And the maximum we can have, given the statute and given our structure, is three. Doesn't mean you can't go down to two, doesn't mean you can't go down to one. But we're going to have to look at all that and determine what's the best route for McHenry County as it relates to the Emergency Telephone System Board, which basically covers your 911 calls and computer rated dispatch software and things of that nature. And, you know, the equipment that is associated with it. Every ETSB funds different things. I'll tell you that in Lake County, there was a portion that was funded by the 911 wireless, which is now, by the way, together. They used to have a wireless 911 surcharge and a regular surcharge on wired lines. Now they're all together. But you used to be able to, and you still do for, for some degree, offset costs related to telecommunication with some of those revenues. But you have to have enough to do that. And again, that's expensive. In McHenry County, they tend to fund the software and then some of the equipment at the PSAPs. In Lake County, they, they funded mobile data computers. You know, so every ETSB can do things differently, because the statute allows you to fund different things from that surcharge. But in regards to that route, I can't tell you yet. I'm a one person on a board. But, you know, I believe that everyone on that board is, you know, rightfully concerned about the path that we take to make sure that, number one, there's some longevity related to the decision that we make.
Do you anticipate that CCOM will be one of the survivors? Is it one of the bigger, I mean, I have no clue how it compares to the other five.
As the village administrator indicated, it's one of the bigger ones. It's certainly one of the two biggest ones, the other one being the county. What's, I'll give you factors that are in their favor. I don't want to say in public that, you know, they have a leg up or anything like that, but things in their favor are that they have some longevity. They've been in effect since 2004-ish, and they do both fire and police dispatch. There are certain, and they serve multiple communities, where although there is at least one PSAP that serves multiple communities, they don't dispatch fire. And the thing that they're trying to avoid here is something called a 911 call fragment. In Lake County, in, in some parts of McHenry County, the 911 call is first answered by the night, you know, operator that is answering calls for the Fire Protection District, with the exception of one entity that doesn't have fire, fire dispatch, you know, responsibilities. In Lake County, it's always governed that way, because it's related to emergency medical dispatch. So all those things considered, you know, I think that structure wise, CCOM is very well structured. You know, technical expertise, I believe that Jason Kern is a very good acquisition. He's got a lot of experience in the communications area, public safety communications. So I would think that yes, CCOM, you know, is certainly a contender to be one of the solid choices.
So there's a potential for some economies of scale then too.
That's exactly what we're talking about.
By acquisition.
That's exactly what you're talking about. But the other part of the equation that is occurring here is, in the papers, you might have read something about NERCOM. I don't know if anyone saw that or not, but McHenry City is, has plans to kind of expand their dispatch capabilities. And there was an article in the paper that designated that NERCOM. And I believe that the police chief at this meeting that we went to spoke in front of everyone to kind of indicate that that was kind of a premature, and it was, he was misrepresented in the paper because it, you know, the, the issues are kind of premature in regards to posturing and things of that nature.
Was there a question about Starcom we needed to answer, Trustee Kraus?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Does anybody have that?
Starcom?
Yeah.
Well, right now, in the county, the county sheriff uses it, but they use an overlay. They, they had a different system that's an overlay onto Starcom, but they have that capability. McHenry City has Starcom. So they've gone to Starcom in that area. And then, like I indicated before, on the Lake County side, a great portion of Lake County is moving toward transitioning to Starcom. I know that they had a work group that was in effect for a couple of years, and they've identified talk groups and things of that nature. And I know my prior agency has made, you know, is making arrangements for procurements for Starcom radios and things of that nature. What you give up with Starcom is maybe more control over your infrastructure, but what you lose is the responsibility for the maintenance of that infrastructure, because you have to pay a per, kind of like a cellphone, where you have to pay a per month fee to be on, on, on that network. So, you know, we have telephone lines or circuit lines that connect us to two satellite receivers here. We have a comparator that acts as a voter. It takes in the two signals, determine which one's the strongest one, and rebroadcasts it. But the cost of those telephone circuits are going up. And in fact, I'm going to have a conversation with Jake and a representative from a different company to look at those costs to try to keep them down. But there's ongoing costs. When you start looking at the cost of maintenance for your system and going to Starcom, there's usually an offset, and it's usually not a bad offset. And plus, you're giving up responsibility for maintenance because somebody else is taking care of it.
Do you know what our council is upstairs at the police department?
The council that we have upstairs?
Yeah.
It's a ZTRON council. It's an old one.
Yeah.
But it's a very old one. I'm used to ZTRON councils that are touchscreen. That's not touchscreen. And in fact, I changed the frequency on that one once, and I couldn't get it back because it was full of dust. So it took me a while to get it back to the frequency I wanted on. But I'm very familiar with ZTRON councils, because that's what we used where I came from.
What does CCOM stand for?
Southeast Emergency Communications.
And would we change our name if we became the sole provider and?
No, I think it's an intergovernmental agreement, and it's set forth in the intergovernmental agreement, so I don't think that you would change it. Unless you want to use a pseudonym, you might go underneath the radar or something.
All right. Are we spending less now than we were when we had dispatch here in Cary?
I won't answer that, because I don't have that question. I will tell you this about that, is if it's about $350,000, you figure that you need, how many people? We've talked about this before, and it's 4.3, five, right? To hire five people is going to cost you more than $343,000. So if you're asking me if it was the right decision and if it's an efficient decision, it was absolutely the right decision.
But I also say that, I mean, you got, we talked about shared liability earlier as well. And when you own it, you own it. This is a different model.
Sure. I'm asking the questions that are going to be asked.
About one person in the seat, that's five. You know, when you get an EMD call, Emergency Medical Dispatch, where you're given pre-arrival instructions, once you take that call, you're married to it. So it's very difficult to interact, and that's why, you know, agencies that have PSAPs tend to have fire and police dispatchers minimally, because one party's doing the police side and the other's dedicated to the fireside, you know, engaged in certainly activities that can't be preempted.
Okay.
I'm ready for any more questions you got.
Not, not yet.
Okay.
I think, actually, to answer part of your question too, correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, but this was a little bit earlier on, we were at a point where our equipment was antiquated, and we were looking at replacing it, plus the accommodations that we had here were substandard, shall we say. So the timing was really good for all the municipalities that participated.
You know, that's the way things are going. I can tell you that I've done studies for previous consolidations, and it only works if everyone's willing to operate similarly in regards to, you know, you can acquire people or entities, but if those entities want a dedicated dispatcher, then you save no money. Because you, you know, you still have to staff that position. But if you can combine them with different agencies so that the workload is equitably distributed, then I think that you've achieved both efficiency, interoperability, and some degree of economy.
Yeah, I mean, I could, probably for you, Kim, it doesn't mean such a big deal.
I think I'm boring, you know, Trustee Kavel.
Starting to use CCOM in, in Lake County. We're testing it out now.
The Starcom?
Yeah, it's already starting to come, and we're starting to test it out.
I was just going to say, for Ellen and Jim, you should go see CCOM if you haven't. It's, you know, it really gets you sleep well at night. It's very sophisticated, I think.
It's really cool. Any other questions for the chief on CCOM? Chris?
I have one item before department reports. As the board recalls, those of you that were with us when we did our employee handbook policy, we made a number of edits to our policies and procedures. And one of the directives of the board was to true up a vacation cap of 240 hours for various village employees. And we've been spending the last year working the system to that level. And we're there. We have two exceptions that I wanted to bring to you tonight. Well, one is in a, in a union position and one is a non-union position. One specific individual in the police department at the sergeant level, by assignment, had been given a detective assignment for some time, and in prior years had had limited vacation availability on shift. And he built a balance that he's unable to whittle down to the reasonable level that we've set. And so I'm bringing to you his request, and I'll monetize that in a minute. And secondly, we have one public works employee that has a similar issue. He's worked to resolve it himself, but I believe that this would be fair on a one-time basis to settle out with these two individuals. And it's another step towards having a consistent village-wide policy that now, through union agreements, that we're now in village-wide policy that now, through union agreements that we're now negotiating, the unions are accepting and understanding. So it's 16,000 for these two individuals, and we believe we can absorb it into our existing budget. We don't do this often, or this is the first time, I think, ever in my term, we've done this, but it will correct this issue that the board raised last year, and wondered if I could proceed.
Boy, I'm sure in favor of that. I want to get this done.
Done.
Absolutely.
The issue with the police position is that if it's not handled that way, and somehow, we don't believe we can force the taking of it by our lawyer's opinion. You know, it could create a situation where you have higher back at a higher rate, so we think that just run it off. Thank you, I appreciate that. Chief, can you give your department report?
Sure. I feel like a one-man show today, so. Providing your packet was information related to July performance of the police departments that relates to statistics. This is one of the first months that I've been here, where we saw a decrease in all traffic, or all, it's not all traffic activity, but all activity that we're monitoring, that's probably due to a couple of different things. We had a number of people out on leave-of-the-absences, primarily family medical leave. The second thing is that, you know, I had spoken earlier, about a year earlier, in regards to a legislation that was enacted that prohibits municipalities from, or actually, not just municipalities, but the state police, conservation police, things of that nature, to monitor, that at least require the issuance of a certain amount of traffic citations during a period, month, year, whatever, week. So, that all being said, I believe that that has some, you know, degree of chilling effect as it relates to activity. What we have seen is an increase in arrests for driving without a valid driver's license, and that's primarily because it's a nondiscretionary issue. You either have a driver's license or you don't, so that's pretty much a pretty easy decision to make when you're looking at taking some enforcement action. One of the interesting things that you'll see is that the miles traveled are substantially increased from both May and June, about 1,000 miles increased from May to June, and then June to July, another, about 900 miles, so. But that lends me to believe and tell you, is that there's a higher degree of preventive patrol, you know, in that regard. The other thing to keep in mind is that we have an officer in field training who's doing very well. He's exceptionally well-infit. So I'm enthusiastic about that higher, number one, and number two, that he'll be a very good addition to our department. The things that we're seeing as increases in regards to reported incidents are identity theft and deceptive practices. I think that's a trend that everyone's seeing as it relates to law enforcement, and the way to combat that is through some degree of increased awareness or education. And then, on the horizon here, we have a public act that was just an act that, it was 99352, it's called the Police and Community Relations Improvement Act, and there's a number of mandates within that act that are going to probably set in motion probably a reduced level of activity, at least as it relates to initiated activity. For example, right now, we do traffic stop statistical study, where we have to submit our numbers to the state. Well, that's been expanded to include pedestrians coming up in January? I believe it's January. So, those type of things, there's mandatory training both annually and every three years on certain topics. There's guidelines for body-worn cameras and things of that nature, and I spoke about it at our G-July department meeting. But other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have in regards to our activity. You know, the high point, which I guess I should have kind of highlighted, is that we have a reduction of about 9.6% in traffic crashes.
Agreed.
And it's kind of fickle, you know, sometimes you think everything you do, you know, if you increase in traffic enforcement activity, it goes up, and then if you don't, you know, you're just there with a presence, it goes down. So I think that, you know, the increased mileage indicates a higher degree of presence as it relates to preventive patrol.
Jake, do you have anything? Anything more?
Actually, just quickly, Meyer Material Tours, we got back 45 interested residents that...
Great.
I just say bodies, because there are some folks that are bringing their families to us. So, 45 people, and so we're coordinating with Meyer Material about setting up the dates here, and we should have that confirmed, hopefully in the near future here.
Great.
Thanks, Chris.
There's any discussion by the committee at the hall of any requested future items?
I'd like to put the municipal mayor all appointments on the next committee of the hall, and we'll have information for you, Chris, to put in the packets at that time for that meeting.
I had one thing, too, just the committee structure. I'd like to discuss the benefits of having the committee structure.
Anything else? Thank you. I will entertain a motion to adjourn it to executive session to discuss personnel appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, and collective bargaining.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. I will entertain a motion to return from executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.